Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's action meeting. We're gonna start off tonight with a video, I believe, right? Oh, wait, yes, yes. Okay, good.
The kick is up. And it is good.
Hello, North Penn. Brandon McManus here. During my days at North Penn High School, I aspired to play in the NFL and dared to dream of winning a Super Bowl. I am proud to say I achieved both. I know that much of my success is a direct result of the loyalty and generosity of the North Penn community that shaped my life and whose schools and teachers provide me with countless opportunities and a drive to be the best person I can be. All of us right now have the chance to be part of the future of North Penn and to build a legacy together as we renovate and restore historic Crawford Stadium. Will you help me to support efforts to raise funds for this community campaign that will result in a modern and accessible facility designed not only to be safe but to bring back events home to where they belong? There are two ways you can join me. At the U-Nite to Celebrate, a gala for Crawford Stadium to be held Friday night, April 24th, or for all the Knights and future Knights out there, play alongside me at the Brandon McManus Kickball Tournament on Saturday, April 25th. I know both events will be a great time, but most of all, they are a way for us to come together and support a great cause. They'll be a source of pride for the entire community for generations to come. I hope to see you soon, and go Knights.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start off this evening with some proclamations. First up will be the North Monco Technical Career Center. The following students are being recognized for their accomplishments in the Pennsylvania Farm Show, the Agricultural Education Horticultural Competition. Mr. Bob Lasavita will be speaking this evening. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Bob Lasavita. I'm the Assistant Director at North Monco Technical Career Center. I'm here for Mrs. Patti Miller, who couldn't be here tonight, she's ill. And thank you for recognizing the horticultural students from North Monco. Participating in the Pennsylvania Farm Show is one of the students' involvement in FAA, Future Farmers of America. Students benefit from their involvement in the state competition in many ways. Our instructors integrate academics into the technical program through this competition. For an entry to be accepted into the competition, students must meet designated entry criteria by reading and following directions, including sizes, heights, I'm sorry, sizes, heights restrictions, and shape requirements, which bring us in math and many other, and maybe specific products they can, can't, or cannot use in the arrangement. This arrangement to detail allows the students to succeed. Students also gain a better understanding of Pennsylvania agriculture and its importance to the state's economy. You will see that some students received multiple awards. The students are able to compete in as many categories as they wish, as long as they adhere to the difficult standards. This year was extremely difficult because we came back on January 2nd and arrangements had to be out to Harrisburg on January 3rd. Didn't leave much time to students to do very well, but they did. I would like to recognize the following horticult students for their work at the Pennsylvania Farm Show. Unable to be here tonight is Joyce Clamsmer. Joyce submitted multiple entries and received multiple awards, including a third place for Modern Bridle Bouquet, second place for Silk Flower Design, and a first place for a boy-themed hospital arrangement and fireside sympathy basket. Joyce was also awarded the Best of Show for Best Permanent Design. Unable to be here tonight is James Stoffer. James received his fifth-place award for a strawberry jar. Unable to be here tonight is Patricia Leahy. Patricia's father will accept her proclamation, and Patricia submitted multiple entries and received the following awards. Fourth place for All-Around Arrangement in a Mug, third place for a Silk Flower Arrangement, and second place for a boy-themed hospital arrangement. Catherine Moore also could not be here tonight. Received third place for her Fresh Vase Arrangement. Autumn Hawes could not be here tonight. Received first place for a Dish Garden in One Shoe. Morgan Stoll received first place for an Ikeban-style fresh centerpiece. Riley Frost received fifth place for a Novelty Container Terrarium. Unable to be here tonight is Hannah Upright. Received fifth place for her Dish Garden in a Shoe. Bailey DeCandelot, fourth place for a Dish Garden with a foliage-only. And Alicia Sanders received third place for a Mixed Garden Herb. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Morgan, congratulations, Morgan. Riley, congratulations. Playing with Bailey, congratulations. And Alicia, congratulations too.
Thank you for coming out.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it, everybody. Thank you.
Can we get another round of applause for the kids? And I'm sorry, I shouldn't made this announcement before. The school board meeting will be aired on Comcast Cable Channel 28 and Verizon FiOS 29 on the following dates. Friday, February 21st at 7:30 p.m., Monday, February 24th at 12:30 and 7:30 p.m., Tuesday, February 25th at 12:30 and 7:30 p.m., and then again on Wednesday, February 26th at 12:30 p.m. So if anybody would like to re-watch this meeting, that's, those are the times available. Okay. Next up, we will have the following students are being recognized for their accomplishments in the 2020 Black History Oratorical Competition. And Dr. Deanna Waters is with us this evening, and also Mrs. Cynthia Douglas. Good evening, Mrs. Douglas. Hello, Dr. Waters. How are you?
Good evening. How is everyone? Is this on? Okay.
Yes, it's on.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Douglas, and I'm a third-grade teacher at Amco Elementary. Students today range from grades three through 12. They were invited to participate in North Penn School District's Second Annual Black History Oratorical Competition, which was held on Thursday, February 6th at Pendale Middle School. The competition was designed to give North Penn School District public school students an opportunity to shine through public speaking while honoring diversity and Black history. To enter this contest, students were required to submit a video of themselves reciting a published speech or poem from an African-American or Black leader. North Penn School District was thrilled to receive 58 student video submissions for this competition, and I'm extremely, extremely proud to introduce to you the 26 finalists who were selected to compete in that final competition. We have our winners. For first place, elementary was Royal Hall. Oak Park. Our second-place winner was Kyrie Glass from Middle School.
First place.
Oh, I'm sorry. First place, Kyrie Glass from Penfield Middle School. Next up is our first-place winner from our high school, Dominique Bethel. Our next is our runner-up for elementary, Tatiana Palmeton from Gwinnor. Our next runner-up was for our middle school, and that was Leroy Hall III from Pendale. Okay, again, we were just so impressed. It was such a tight competition. These kids were fabulous. If you did not attend this year, please come out next year, because we know it's gonna be even bigger and better. Our next finalist, Kayla Gray from Gwinnor. Olivia Taylor could not be here tonight. We're gonna move to Eric Crawford from Gwinnett Square, looking handsome. Harini Nagamon Galam from Gwinnett Square. Savannah Gallard, Hatfield Elementary. Summer Kreske, Hatfield Elementary. Alexis Meggensen couldn't be here tonight. Jaden Black, Montgomery, President of His Student Council. Kathryn Phillips, Montgomery. Aleah Williams, Montgomery. Royce Hall, Oak Park. Elasia Hightower, Oak Park. And Elasia also just won the NAACP SA Contest for Middle School. She won that as well last week. Verena Marcos, Oak Park. Prem Pathic is not here, also from Oak Park. Moving to York Avenue, Joel Arthur. And our middle schoolers from Penbrook, Amaya Williams. Jacob Carlet is not here. Zoe Snyder is, from Pendale. Justin Long from Penfield, Justin Long Jr. Jojo DiWaldi could not be here, but Glenn Xavier is our last finalist to celebrate tonight from Penfield. Congratulations.
Did Mrs. Douglas leave already? Another round of applause for everybody. I believe there'll be another opportunity to see the contestants in the oratorical competition at the International Spring Festival in April as well, if anybody would like to come out and see them. Okay, next up then, we will move on to the Audience of Citizens. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment tonight? Just let me read the Audience of Citizens guidelines real quick, too. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone. Good evening, Mr. Patchell.
Good evening. My name is William Patchell. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane in Lansdale, Shirley, Montgomery Township. I moved there for a specific purpose because it's one of the best-run townships, sustainable tax base, and is really something that every other portion of the state would love to emulate. And my taxes haven't gone up there in about eight or nine years. It's miraculous how they should keep doing things with the same amount of money. We have a wonderful police force, which is my criteria why anybody would want to move to a place, because if you can't sleep safely at night and have a response time in less than five minutes, you live in a bad place. You know, maybe that's what you can afford. But anyway, I want to talk to the board about, I met with Dr. Dietrich, with the, met with the superintendent, and we discussed the situation at Inglewood, and I said, due to the lack of planning, we now ran into this problem. I'm sure there's about, I don't know the number of students that had to be shuffled around, but I'm sure those parents are not real happy about it, you know? And we have things that counterbalance this. We're gonna get a magnificent stadium, but that, the people that are having their children shuffled around from building to building, and I said, the foresight which was shown a couple of years ago was slim to none, maybe even nil, and I told them about this. You didn't provide not one postage stamp of extra area, and I know it's very difficult because nobody knows what's happening with housing. I see all these children get off these buses at these apartment houses, and I warned the district about, you're going to have financial and academic apartheidism. You know why? Because money really decides the way things really work. It decides who gets what job. It decides where people move. It decides what happens, because that's the real blood in a free-market capitalistic system. It's, where's your money? Okay? Now, what's gonna happen here is, I have to remind you about Act One. I should say it a couple of times, Act One, so you don't have, you can maintain your focus on what's going on, because you have to stick with this. And every time you raise the taxes, the landlord in Lansdale, the landlord in Hatfield is gonna march up, say, "I'm gonna raise your rent by about $300 a month." Well, I can't live here anymore. I don't care. I really don't care. I know your child's brilliant at Montgomery Elementary, but you have to move. I'm moving you out of here. So I want you to be very sure, everybody on this board is making a lot of money. You don't really have a lot of problems. And a lot of problems are, in the state of Pennsylvania, oh yeah, we had to get rid of all our police. We rely on a state police. You know, it's about three or four-hour response time. Why are they doing that? They can't afford it. You live in a very blessed area. Most of the state is really having very, very challenging problems, and you need to be able to respond to the tax and the income of the senior citizens, the small businesses, and that's what you need to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move on then to the minutes. Recommend approval of the minutes from the January 16th, 2020 Board Action Meeting. Do I have, and from the February 11th, 2020 Work Session. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on then to the committee reports. First up is personnel. The Personnel Committee of the Board met in executive session on February 4th, 2020 to discuss matters of personnel, including the appointment of staff, staffing considerations, and personnel budgeting for the 2020-2021 school year, collective bargaining, and compensation. End of report. Finance. Mr. Fusco.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll. This is an update from the Special Finance Committee meeting held on February 3rd and the regular meeting held on February 11th. The monthly financial reports and budget transfers were reviewed with additional discussion on the following items. The 2021 Extended School Care Program budget and rates. Marjorie Scott presented an overview of the Extended School Care Program and the 2021 budget. Ms. Scott discussed the recommendations for increases of 2.6% in tuition and camp fees as well as increased employee wages. Extended care transfers, extended care transfers $50,000 to the general fund each year. The tuition and camp rates appear on tonight's agenda. 2021 Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Budget. Mr. Skoraki presented an overview of the budget. North Penn's total share for 2021 is $209,411, which represents a 2,336 or 1.1% reduction. The MCIU budget appears on tonight's agenda. Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee, second alternate. Mr. Skoraki presented the request to add Kristen Johnson, Assistant Director of Business Administration, as the second alternate to the Tax Collection Committee. The Tax Collection Committee oversees the earned income tax collection for Montgomery County. This item appears on tonight's agenda. Auditing Services Request for Proposals. Mr. Skoraki presented the request, to issue a request for proposals for auditing services as per the board policy. This item appears on tonight's agenda. 2019 Tax Leans. Mr. Skoraki reviewed the number of properties that were leaned for 2019 unpaid real estate taxes. There was a very slight reduction in the amount that was leaned when compared to the previous year. Act One, Special Education Exception. Mr. Skoraki informed the committee that the Special Education Exception was filed on January 30th with the Pennsylvania Department of Education. 2019 Pennsylvania Association of School Board, I'm sorry, School Business Officials, or PASBO, Award of Achievement. The PASBO Awards of Achievement Program recognizes outstanding practices and ideas that result in significant contributions to school business management, promotes and enhances the overall operation of the school entity, is innovative, and can be replicated by other local education agencies. Mr. Skoraki announced that the 2019 winner is Nick Krainak, Transportation Coordinator at North Penn, for his propane bus project submission. This is the second consecutive year North Penn has won this coveted award. As a result of the award, North Penn will be given $3,000 to award scholarships to graduating seniors. 2021, 2020-21 Real Estate Tax and Rent Rebate Program. Mr. Skoraki presented data illustrating the budget impact at various rebate percentages, including supplemental payments. Supplemental payments are issued by the state in addition to the base rebate amount if a homeowner pays more than 15% of their household income for real estate taxes. Appearing on tonight's agenda is an expansion of the program to 40% of the state rebate amount, which will include supplemental payments for the first time. The next Finance Committee meeting will be held on Monday, March 2nd, 2020, and Tuesday, March 10th, 2020. Both meetings start at 6:00 p.m. and will be held at the ESC. Are there any questions? End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Moving on then to Safe Schools, Mr. Caso.
Thank you. The Safe Schools Committee met on January 27th, 2020. The meeting began with the committee hearing questions from community members regarding a recent occurrence at Penfield Middle School. Dr. Dietrich was able to clarify rumors about the event, which were not correct, and provide the public with a better understanding of how North Penn responds jointly with law enforcement partners in these type, types of situations. The subject of communication to parents was also discussed, and the committee thanked those in attendance for their suggestions. The committee then had a lengthy discussion about behavioral threat assessment and exclusionary practices, during which Dr. Dietrich, Dr. Ruffo, Mr. Dur, and Dr. John Sigler, a subject matter expert from the community, shared details about evidence-based practices. North Penn's current practices and goals were explored as they relate to the statutory requirements and leading practices. Mr. Dur then provided the committee with a brief overview of the Safe to Say Something tip data from the previous 12 months. The system has evolved since it was first launched in January of 2019, and it has been a very good resource for North Penn. The chair then spoke about his desire to have North Penn take a leadership role by convening a task force of local experts from education, law enforcement, and juvenile justice to address challenges such as information sharing. The administration and committee members will work to identify clear outcomes and next steps. Finally, the committee reiterated the need for Common Sense Extreme Risk Protection Order legislation and its importance in keeping schools safe. These red flag laws are currently in place in 17 states and allow family members or law enforcement to petition the court to have firearms removed from those who are deemed a safety risk. It is important that the committee make the need for this legislation clear to state lawmakers and will continue to explore the topic. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting will take place on Monday, February 24th, here at the ESC at 6:00 p.m. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Caso. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Caso? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Educational Community and Policy Committee. Mrs. G, please.
The Education Community Policy Committee meeting was held on February 4th, 2020. As a result of the ongoing policy review process with PSBA, Dr. Todd Bauer presented several policies to the committee that had been reviewed by administration, the district solicitor, and Mr. Fusco. Those policies are on the agenda tonight for a first reading. As a result of the ongoing policy review process with PSBA, Dr. Todd Bauer presented one policy to the committee that will be repealed following the adoption of those policies that will take their place. Notice of intent to repeal specific policies is on tonight's agenda. One student overnight travel request was presented to and reviewed by the committee. Dr. Elizabeth Santoro presented three options, as well as their implications, that would address the enrollment capacity issues at Inglewood Elementary. Option A would move Inglewood students and Gwinnett Square students living in a specific area to NASH. In option B, Inglewood students living in a designated area would attend NASH. The third option C, or the hybrid model, would reassign some Inglewood students to NASH and Gwinnett Square, depending upon where they live. Members of the committee voted to move option C to the work session meeting. The next meeting of the Education Community Policy Committee will be held on March 3rd, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. at the ESC. End of report.
Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mrs. G? Okay, I would just like to thank Mrs. Santoro and the staff for coming up with the hybrid Model C. I think that went over about as well as it could for redistricting. I think it was very well received by the members of the Inglewood community. So thank you for your work on that, Dr. Santoro. And Dr. Dietrich. And Dr. Bauer. And anyone else involved. I know it was a group effort. Thank you. All right, moving on to Facilities and Operations. Mr. Caso.
Thank you. The Facilities and Operations Committee met on January 27th, 2020. A request to waive facility use fees for the Buxmont Officials and the North Penn Valley Umpires Association was discussed. Both organizations use a classroom in the high school to hold their meetings. The organization has been considered a Class III group, events held by nonprofit organizations where no admission is charged, collection or donation is taken, or donation is requested. And has been charged 25, the group has been charged $25 per meeting for a total annual fee estimated at $250. Mr. Skoraki explained the different classes to the committee. The committee then requested that the administration provide additional information regarding other Class III groups, and if the two organizations have their 501s 3C nonprofit status. The decision was tabled until the February 24th, 2020 Facilities and Operations meeting. Next, Melissa Frelick, Coordinator of School Nutrition Services, shared the department's sustainability initiatives. School Nutrition Services has eliminated the purchase of all Styrofoam products starting this year. The Styrofoam products have been replaced with paper cup, with paper soup bowls and reuse tray, reusable trays. Compostable trays have been purchased to use in emergencies only. In addition, Kraft Unbleached Food Boats and Napkins are in use along with paper coffee cups. Another initiative removed plastic straws from the elementary schools. Straws are still available at the high school, and alternatives are being investigated. In addition to the presentation, three high school students discussed their goals for future sustainability activities, such as composting, reduction of waste, and better recycling practices. Tom Schneider, Director of Facilities and Operations, provided information of a waste audit that was performed by the Pendale Middle School students in Waste Management in 2014. At that time, the audit showed that 47% of Pendale's waste was compostable organic materials, which included paper towels. Currently, there are no composting facilities in the area, and continued research is needed to locate a potential composting facility. Waste Management is assisting in this research and also indicated that we could have a tour of their recycling separation facility in Philadelphia around Earth Day in April. The schedule of this event will be forthcoming. Mr. Schneider, Director of Facilities and Operations, then provided an update of the Napp Elementary Project bidding schedule and most recent construction estimate. There have been numerous meetings with the design team, administration, building principal, and staff to discuss designs, phasing, and construction impact. The estimate- The estimated construction cost is $23 million, with the total project cost estimated at $28.4 million. There was a request to hold a special board meeting on April 27th, 2020 to award contracts. April 27th, 2020 is a scheduled Facilities and Operations Committee meeting here at the ESC. I assume that's 7:00 o'clock PM start time, correct?
Seven or six?
6:30.
6:30, okay. Yeah, so, to clear the record, next meeting is April 27th, 2020, 6:30 here at the ESC, and that's also when there will be a special board meeting to award contracts. End of report.
Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Casa?
Just one comment. So, I was part of the meeting about the, or the presentation about sustainability. So, we kind of talked about the board supporting what the students are doing. So, here I sit with my cup. But, at the board meetings, to bring our own water bottles and do what we can do to support the students' efforts as well, just an idea. All right, there you go.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. All right, moving on to the North Monaco Technical Career Center.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. McBain.
Thank you, Mrs. Stone.
Yes, sorry.
The Joint Operating Committee met on January 22nd to reorganize and welcome new board members, including our own Mr. Rush and Dr. Leonard Lewis Campbell. Budget discussions begin with the presentation of projections for the 2021 academic year, for which North Penn's contributions are expected to increase by 0.81%, or about $176,000, as a result of slightly higher student attendance. The board also accepted resignation of Mr. Alan DeLonge and congratulated him on his career of over 20 years as a culinary instructor. Last month, North Monaco students competed at the Pennsylvania Farm Show in Harrisburg, taking three of the five available Best in Show awards. The North Monaco Technical and Career Center was also honored to host the District Two Skills Competition, and accounted for 18 first-place finishers in fields ranging from restaurant service to criminal justice to mechatronics. Those students will move on to the statewide competition in April. Finally, the Career Center held its annual open house on February 6th. Potential students and their families came to explore the many programs offered just up the road from North Penn High School, and the career opportunities they can create for students. If any families missed the event or are still seeking information, please start with a visit to their website, www.nmtcc.org. The next meeting, the Joint Operating Committee, is listed here, is Wednesday, February 19th, which was obviously last night. The next one, I believe, will be March 18th, a Wednesday as well, at 7:00 PM. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McBain. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Okay, moving on then to the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. Mrs. Ramich, please.
The MCIU board met on January 22nd. The board met to review and discuss legislative updates, hear updates about Head Start activities, professional program activities, and training activities. The board welcomed new members appointed by their respective school districts of Upper Dublin, Upper Moreland, and Methacton. William England, representing Shelton Ham School District, was appointed to serve as the board vice president, and I was appointed to serve as the board treasurer. This was as a result of some shifts in movement because of the recent election. One topic of interest to the North Penn School Board, which we happened to discuss at a prior Finance Committee meeting, is that the MCIU board moved forward in a vote of approval of the MCIU Membership Service Budget. The total budget request remains level at 1 million 518 dollars, sorry, 1.5 million dollars. North Penn's contribution for the 2021 school year is $209,000. This represents a 1.1 reduction from last year. The next meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 26th. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, moving on then to the North Penn Educational Foundation. Mrs. Ramich, again, please.
The foundation met last on February 5th at the high school. After several months of working with MATCH nonprofit to draft a new strategic plan, the trustees approved the plan that includes tactics and strategies to meet goals in areas of board governance, marketing, grant programming, alumni relations, development, and finance. Upcoming work related to this will be reviewed, a review of committee membership, an effort to strengthen the board of trustees, and an updating of bylaws. Executive Director Christine Lebraski updated trustees on the search for a development manager and administrative assistant. We hope both positions will be filled by March. Unfortunately, we accepted the resignation of longtime trustee Dennis Harkin. Dennis was instrumental in the start and continued success of the annual golf outing. The community is invited to the Unite to Celebrate Gala in support of renovations at Crawford Stadium on Friday, April 25th, 24th, at Pinecrest. The special evening will feature guest speaker Brandon McManus, 2009 North Penn High School graduate and Super Bowl champion. The night will also include presentations, entertainment, and a silent auction. The next day is for families, as we hold our first-ever Brandon McManus Kickball Tournament for district students. Information on both events can be found on the foundation's new and improved website, which you can access in, under the "For Families" tab at northpenn.org. The foundation's Build a Bag Backpack Drive is being highlighted next month at the National School Foundation Association Conference, being held in Philadelphia. Christine Lebraski and Katie Andre will give a presentation to other foundations about the great success of this program. The best part of the month's meeting was visiting North Penn High School's technology education teacher Kurt Reinwack, Reinwine, where we learned about three grants his department recently received. It was truly an amazing and very spectacular visit. We saw firsthand the milling machine, the special computing goggles, and Sphero robots. Kurt and his department are commended for their innovative work they are doing and cutting-edge technology they are bringing to our students. Really, an amazing program. The foundation next meets on March 11th at 7:45 at the ESC. For more information on the foundation or the events mentioned, please contact Christine Lebraski. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, moving on then to the Legislative Report. Mr. McBain.
I apologize ahead of time for the length. There's a lot to talk about tonight. One of our most important goals as a board over the last few years has been to invite every member of the North Penn community back into discussions and processes we undertake to find solutions to our most pressing challenges. This includes a never-ending but vital conversation about how to provide a dynamic and empowering education for each student while balancing every expense with our taxpayers' needs and often inflexible financial realities. We work together to complete this task each year, as the extraordinary work of our administrators, educators, support staff, and parents allows to provide a top-tier education for our students, all while we maintain some of the lowest tax rates in Montgomery County and expand our tax rebate program. Each year, we find a way to succeed together. But no matter how successfully we plan for the future of this district and our taxpayers, our financial landscape and the options we have to navigate through it are becoming increasingly limited by decisions made in Harrisburg by our Commonwealth's elected officials. Underfunded or entirely unfunded mandates have driven district expenses across the state to unsustainable levels, and the impacts we see right here in North Penn are striking. Annual contribution rates to the state pension fund, or PISRs, grew from under 9% in the 2011 to 2012 academic year to over 33% this past year. That's a payment of $41.8 million from North Penn last year alone, with another expected increase of over $1.7 million this coming year. This required expense that once accounted for about 5% of our budget now claims about 16%, even as special education costs and other many expenses rise. In the same nine-year stretch, for example, North Penn's charter school tuition expenses, which public schools like ours are required by the state to pay, have risen from about $1.5 million to $2.7 million annually, and we expect that number to rise to nearly $3 million in the coming year. It's time that we tackle this challenge as a community. As we have done to overcome other hurdles in the past, we will start by informing our neighbors with monthly updates on state budget and educational issues being discussed in Harrisburg, which directly impact North Penn students, families, and taxpayers. We hope this information will keep each member of our community in a position to better understand the bigger picture, as we continue to work through further budget discussions. So, here is our first actual update. Governor Wolf's proposed budget included an additional $405 million for public education, which increases the basic subsidy of $100 million in special education $25 million line items. The remaining $280 million will come from projected savings gained from proposed charter school funding reforms. That proposal currently takes the form of House Bill 2261 and Senate Bill 1024, and focuses on charter school transparency, performance, outcomes, and funding. It would apply a new special education formula to all charter schools and establish statewide charter, statewide charter, sorry, statewide cyber charter tuition rates of $9,500 per student per year. As discussed in our last Finance Committee meeting, North Penn has already begun to address this issue by building our own in-house cyber program, creating approximately $10,000 in savings per pupil. Governor Wolf's proposed charter school reform, if enacted, would save North Penn School District $812,000 plus. The House of Representatives recently passed House Bill 2283, which amends the right to no law to allow school districts to charge reasonable fees for compiling records that are requested for commercial purposes. This is particularly impactful for districts like North Penn, who have received requests for data which can require many hours from our own staff to compile. House Bill 283 is now in the Senate State Government Committee. Finally, board members are invited to take part in Advocacy Day on March 23rd at the state Capitol from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Pennsylvania School Boards Association, PSBA, Pennsylvania Association of Intermediate Units, PAIU, and the Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators, PASA, are joining together for this event. Registration is free at mypsba.org and is open until March 17th. Say it with me. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McBain. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. McBain, for this update. It's very informative. I think it's important, as we talk about increasing the community dialogue and knowledge about what's happening in Harrisburg, for which we end up many times tackling the symptoms as opposed to the cause of these fiscal issues. $405 million is appreciated. It's nice to see from the state as an increase, but I think it's important for the community to understand there are 500 districts across Pennsylvania. So, when we consider that, I also wanted to just confirm, and maybe Dr. Dietrich or Mr. McBain, you have this answer. For safe schools funding, which I find it interesting, right here, another date has passed, marking Parkland and that tragedy, we've gone from $60 million from the state down to $15 million. Is that still true?
I believe that's true, yeah.
And so, I think that's important for the community to understand, when we invest millions of dollars each year, cybersecurity, those costs are going up. There's not enough help from the state or Harrisburg with that. Mental health resources for our community, for counselors, for better resources, and traditional security that will make for a better climate in our schools as well. I just, as a school board member, find it very difficult to see how that $405 million is going to be stretched far, and I hope that these updates continue to inform the community about the tough questions we need to ask our representatives in Harrisburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. I think the public might be surprised to realize that Pennsylvania ranks, I think, 47th out of 50 states in public school funding. So, they definitely have some work to do there in Harrisburg, and we need to make sure that they did it done. So, I know I'm going to the Advocacy Day, so, already signed up. All right, moving on then to the Solicitors' Report. Mr. Summers, please.
Thank you, Madam President. In terms of tonight's report, I'd like to announce that in addition to its meeting on February 4th, the Personnel Committee of the Board did also meet this evening in executive session for the purpose of discussing a matter of personnel related to an administrative vacancy. And the board, the full board, also met this evening in executive session immediately prior to tonight's meeting for the purpose of discussing a matter of personnel involving an administrative employee. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Moving on then to the Superintendent Report. Dr. Dietrich, please.
Thank you. I recommend adoption of the Full Consent Agenda. That would include the items regarding adoption and repeal of policies, approval to advertise for bid and RFP, the PlanCon Part K bond refunding, the gifts to the district, the grant funding for dyslexia and early literacy intervention pilot program expansion, contracts, student travel, Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee, second alternate, and alternative placements.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. G., seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and Paychem LLC concerning the property located at 418 Stump Road parcel noted in the agenda be approved as presented, and that the board president be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for the parcel shall be decreased from $2,805,000 to $1,922,700.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and Pinecrest Golf Club Incorporated concerning the properties located at 101 and 164 Country Club Drive, which is seven parcels, be approved as presented, and that the board president be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for the parcel shall be decreased from $4,491,600 to $1,973,900.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and Harleysville LLC concerning the property located at 219 Fort Detwiler Road parcel indicated in the agenda be approved as presented, and that the board president be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for the parcel shall be increased from $1,025,000 to $1,208,660.
Do I have a motion?
Moved.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend the approval of personnel items as per the attached.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motioned by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the personnel items as per the attached.
That's the one we just said.
Recommend the approval of the attached resolution for real estate tax rebate program for the qualified homeowners and renters for the 2020-21 fiscal year.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions?
I just have a question, Mr. Skoraki. As this program continues to innovate and expand, could you update us which districts at this point have replicated this or are looking to?
Sure. I've been contacted by so many districts now. I'm going to go off the top of my memory. I think it's about eight or nine that contacted me. I know two have actually implemented our program, in essence, at their districts. Greater Latrobe Area School District is one, and the second one is Penridge. They both implemented a year ago. Other districts that have contacted me are Perkielman Valley, Great Valley, Owen J. Roberts, Mountain Lemon, Shanksville Stony Creek School District, I think they have a district of 200 children, and Souderton. So, the number of districts have expressed interest, and there are varying stages of approval at this point in time. And I know Mr. Summers has also spoken to some of those school districts' solicitors, just reviewing the legality under Act One and the PA Constitution. So, that has also been very helpful in helping to promote the program.
Fantastic. Thank you for that update. I wasn't aware how far and wide that has spread. May it continue. And the supplemental aspect, which we're expanding, this will be first in the state? Is that correct understanding?
To my knowledge, that's correct. And again, the supplemental program, the way that works is if an individual pays more than 15% of their total income in property taxes, they're eligible for an additional 50% of the base amount. So, for example, if someone receives $650 in a rebate, depending on how much they pay in the real estate taxes, they could be eligible for another $325 in supplements, bringing the grand total of $975.
Thank you, Mr. Skoraki. So, I believe we have a motion on the floor. Are there any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the 2020-21 Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Budget. North Penn's share of the budget is $209,411.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motioned by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the 2020-21 Extended School Care Program tuition rates and camp fees as per the attached. The rates do reflect a 2020-21 fiscal year. The rates do reflect a 2.6% increase over the current year.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions?
I do have a question. Is that a typical increase that we would typically have, 2.6? Is that pretty standard of what we do each year?
It has been. It's typically been the Act 1 index each year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Now we'll move on to the finance reports. For Mr. Skrocky, please.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of quick updates. First off, thank you to the board for approving the tax rebate program for the 2021 year. An update on the current year. So far this year, we've had 390 applicants take advantage of the rebate program. We've issued over $41,000 in rebate checks this year. $107 is the average rebate, and we are actually up 19% this year in the number of applicants and up 61% in the amount of rebates that have actually been issued. Second item for an update, I mentioned at the last Finance Committee meeting that we had a lovely visit from the IRS the last two days, yesterday and today. So I'm still sitting here. I wasn't dragged out in handcuffs right now, so we're in compliance. So that's a good thing. I was sweating it out a little bit, but this was for our 403B and 457B plans, Tax Shelter Annuities are the 403B plans. So we think we're in total compliance. They left and didn't say too much, so they are gone and won't be back. There's some additional work they need to do back in their offices, but we're not aware of any kind of issues or findings or anything like that, which is great news. I do want to thank our, we have a third-party consulting firm where we remit the money to, and they remit the money then to the individual accounts, a company called TSA Consulting Group out of Florida, and they were quite helpful in preparing for the audit. So thank you to them. Third item, I want to mention that last week, we were informed that for the fifth straight year, we were recipient of the ASBO Meritorious Budget Award. So thank you for the, all the work that Kristin Johnson did in preparing that document. We are one of a small number of districts in the Commonwealth that received that award. I believe it's 10 in the past year that received that award. So kudos to everyone in the business office, in particular to Kristin Johnson for putting that budget book together, and that budget book is attached in board docs as well as the press release. In Mr. Fusco's Finance Committee report, he did mention about Mr. Cranach receiving the PASBO Award of Achievement, so we'll be out at the PASBO Conference in Pittsburgh, and part of that conference will include recognition of Mr. Cranach, and he'll receive a $3,000 scholarship for our student. So that's awesome. Congratulations to Nick. And finally, to follow up on Mr. McBain's report on Governor Wolf's budget in terms of impact for North Penn School District, just to let you know, the governor proposed a basic education funding increase at North Penn of 2.95%. So that's good. It's higher than the Act 1 index. $325,000 increase for the basic ed funding, so we're thankful for that. Special ed funding, though, I think we need to have a little chat with Governor Wolf because the $25 million statewide increase only results in a 0.85% increase in the funding here at North Penn School District. That's $56,000 on a $50 million special education funding budget, which by the way has been increasing to the tune of about 7.5% on average over the last 10 years. So clearly, the state funding, especially in the area of special education, is not keeping up with our mandated expenses. In terms of the treasures report, this report is for the month of January 2020. We had cash receipts in January totaling slightly over $4 million. Cash disbursements for January totaled $23.8 million, and we had total available funds at the end of January at $150 million. Now unfortunately, that $150 million total is $4.7 million less than last year. And I believe this is the first treasures report that I delivered where the year-over-year comparison with our total available funds has actually been less. So this is the first time. We're down about $4.7 million over last year. So I'd ask, I'd recommend approval of the treasures report for January 2020.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a question. So this $4 million that it's less than last year?
4.7, yes.
4.7, Mr. Skrocky. Is there an area that it's generally in or it's just across the board?
Pretty much across the board.
Okay.
Yes, it is. Now, we do have a deficit budget this year of almost $7 million, so that plays a role. Another factor, we did have three payrolls in January, so that's factored in, but we've had three payroll months before, and we've always were higher than the previous year. So I'm hoping February, at the end of February, when we close that out, that $4.7 million won't be as large, or we might actually have an increase compared to last February.
Okay.
But still, in the six years that I've been providing treasures report, this is the first time that we've actually been less from a cash position than we were from the previous year.
All right. So dare I ask, so if that situation does occur in February, could you come to the meeting with maybe just an analysis as to where the trend is going, and do you see a particular area that there needs to be focus on? So I get the across the board. I would appreciate that.
And also, what we'll do as we get deeper into the budget process will include seven-year projections to moving forward to take a look, in particular, what our fund balance looks like over the next several years.
And I have another question, if I can. Back to the audit. Thank goodness you're here. No problems. But do they have a requirement to respond back to the school district in any reasonable period of time if they identify noncompliance? So you're just not sweating this out, or?
Well, we made sure. We had an informal exit interview today.
Okay.
To ascertain if there are any issues whatsoever. So the agents indicated that they still have to do some work back in the office, but they did not see any issues with what they examined so far.
Okay, great.
So it'll probably be about 60 days before we receive an official document, but based on their comment that there were no issues and they're leaving, if there were issues, they would have stayed and they would have communicated those to us.
And you wouldn't be here, right?
I wouldn't be here, right. I would be in, what's it, Greaterford, I guess? I don't know.
Oh, God.
No, that's not it. We're the white-collar criminals. No, I don't know.
The country club criminals.
The country club, right.
Thank you, Mr. Skrocky.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Skrocky, and congratulations again on your fifth award and to Kristin as well.
Thank you.
If they handed out rings like they do for the Super Bowl, you'd have a whole hand, huh? So that's really great. It's very impressive. Okay, so I think we have a motion on the floor. If there are no further comments, do we, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next item, we have budget transfers for the month of January. These were reviewed at the Finance Committee, and they total $1,352,098.34. We're recommending approval of the attached budget transfers.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. or Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And next item up for vote, we have the sanction and approval of invoices. I'm recommending ratification of disbursements for the month of January in the amount of
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I do want to mention, I failed to introduce Dawn Johnston, who's next to me, and Dawn Johnston, sorry. Dawn is going to be here at the March action meeting, because I will be in Pittsburgh at that PASBO Conference, so Dawn is observing me recording the votes and so forth in board docs. So in March, please take it easy on her and do slow votes, because sometimes it's difficult to keep up with all these votes.
Okay.
Okay?
No pressure, Mrs. Johnston.
Dawn will be taking over in March for me.
And who's working the timer?
I'm working the timer, exactly.
All right. Yeah, okay.
And the last item we have, just for information, and we do review these at the monthly Finance Committee meeting, we have the monthly financial reports.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Moving on to other business. Does anyone have any other additional topics? Then we will move on to the Second Audience of Citizens Guidelines. Mr. Patchell.
We should start the time, the three minutes. I want to get my full time. Here we go. Okay, I won't repeat my name or my address, it will be redundant, and I want to get to something that's more important than where I live. Okay, what we have to understand is unemployment rate. 3.9, 3.8, 3.7, 3.3, 3.2, 3.1. Dr. Dietrich is well aware what's happening. Oh, we can't get any bus drivers. Can't get anybody working in the lunchroom. We can't, I tell you, it's going to creep up. It's like the Titanic thinking. Can't hire any more teachers. Yeah, well, we only started 50,000, 60,000. Well, they're getting a job in private industry right out of the bat. If they're decent, 3.5 average, they're making $80,000, $90,000 a year to start, almost as good as a lot of the people on the board. Okay? So what's going to happen here? You have Milton Freeman pointed out, there's academics, there's infrastructure, and there's academic. You better focus in on academic, because I don't know how you're going to hire anybody. You got a $2,000 door buck, but I tell you what, that's never ever going to teach a child anything. You're going to find out, you're going to have real difficulties about manning people. Industry's having a really hard time finding people that are qualified. What do they do? Well, I think out of Tesla, he says, you don't even need a high school degree. Just come in, I'll teach you how to put the left-hand door on. So you're having a really hard time, you're going to have a problem. I told you about what's happening. All the people my age are retiring. I'm not going to sell my house. Why would I do that? It's going up 3% or 4%. You want to look at a rental in Montgomery Township? $2,800, $3,000. It's pretty nice, you know? That's a nice income. Where do you live? I live down in Florida. I guess that's why the lady on CBS moved out of New York City, moved down to Washington. It's probably a better tax treatment. Everybody's moving out of these cities. So what I want you to do is focus in on, as I said, the amount of money that you have to spend and the amount of income that you have coming in is the main driver of what you want to do. You want to think big? Well, you better find some big revenue sources, because I'm telling you, every month, people are retiring in these townships, and what they're doing is they're not going to pay Berkeimer. You're going to be $7 million in the hole, $8 million in the hole, $9 million in the hole, and I'll tell you what, who are you going to attract? People coming out of Philadelphia. They got air conditioners hanging out of their windows. They got 10 schools that need asbestos abatement, and I'm just thinking, boy, won't this be fantastic? I contacted Senator Collette's office and Todd Stevens. You know what's going to happen? All your money's going to come from Harrisburg, and it won't be any more property taxes. You'll be crying your eyes out up there on a state Capitol building, and you know what? All the money's going to go down to Philadelphia where they really need help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment this evening? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to take this moment since I was in the building to reintroduce myself to everyone here. There's a reason why I'm doing that. My name, I'm going to give you my full name. It'll probably take the three minutes. It is Sheikh Anwar Abdul Muhammed. Sheikh is a leader, teacher. Anwar means most beautiful, most intelligent. Abdul, servant of, Muhammed, guardian, protector. And Muhammad is not a name, it's a title. But you can simply call me Sheikh Anwar, or Sheikh, if you please. I wanted to take this, some things have changed since the last time I've spoken to